Thank you for your patience. We just finished up a workshop. Um, tonight's it is five oh seven P M on October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. This is our regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, um, President Bumpus. We have Director Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Etscor, and Director Whitfield, Student Representative Sophia Willett, and Myron Robinson. Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments are, all comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to set the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item two point zero five is our motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated October fourteen, twenty twenty four.
Month, yeah. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have three business items that have been removed from the agenda, so I'll go ahead and we will make that motion to approve that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the amended agenda dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item three point zero one, we have Staff Recognition Employees of the Month for September. The Monroe School District Honor Roll Recognition Program is aimed at recognizing employees for exemplifying our core values through their service to our students, staff, families, and community. Anyone can nominate an employee for the honor roll through the online form found on our website. At the end of each month, all nominations nominations are reviewed, and two employees are selected as the employees of the month, one certificated employee and one classified employee. All nominees are recognized on our website and receive certificates. Twenty-four incredible employees were nominated to the Employee Honor Roll in September. That's awesome. Uh, we'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the two employees who were selected as the September employees of the month.
All right, I'm gonna get things started off with our classified employee of the month, Ben Wright. Is Ben here? No? Okay, Ben is a para educator at Freyland, Freyland Elementary. Hit the core value that he exemplifies is integrity. Ben has been at Freyland for many years, and he still continues to be a strong para educator in his work with students, families, and colleagues. He's a math whiz, and teachers appreciate having Ben work with our struggling students or high cap students in small groups to help them grow and build their math capacity. Ben goes above and beyond to make all aspects of our school better. He steps in to create effective playground routines and games. He steps in to provide support to students on green team lunch, green team at lunch. He steps in to provide effective small group instruction to students in need of additional time, practice, support, and feedback. He can be counted on every day to be present for our kids. And this Jeff Presley was just talking about him to me today as well, so it truly is an honor to recognize Ben and to thank him for all that he does for our students at Freyland. Ben, we appreciate you so much.
And I have the certificated employee of the month, Landa Pastrana, and the teacher at Frank Wagner Elementary. Is Landa here? Okay, she has two nominations. Nomination number one says, Landa is a colleague who supports, who supports teams with strong collaboration. She has the ability to work with several different teams and helps keep the work of essential standards grounded that we're doing across all grade levels, so the students are achieving in all subjects. She demands that we consider how we're going to meet the needs of students while keeping the rigor high. She is just a delight to work with, and I couldn't be more grateful for her help perspective and the time she gives our team in particular. Nomination number two for her says, Landa goes above and beyond to support our teachers so they can better support our language learners. She attends several grade level team meetings. There she helps us unpack standards, set goals, review data, and plan for intervention. Our teachers and students benefit from her dedication every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item three point zero two, consideration of donations. And we have a few donations received. What, Molly?
Okay, we have Bearcat Pride has donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant of one hundred and ten dollars to purchase a banner for the National Honor Society Chapter. Starbucks has donated merchandise and goods for a value of twenty dollars to the Monroe School District. Ixtapa has donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of four hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose of student cost to attend a summer yearbook camp for the Monroe High School yearbook. Great Clips has donated haircut gift cards and hair products for a value of three hundred dollars to the Monroe School District. Monroe Vision Clinic has donated thirty eyeglass cases to the Monroe School District. And Cascade Community Church has donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant of five hundred dollars for the sole and express purpose for backpacks for the Monroe School District. A huge thank you to each and every one of you for continuing to partner with us in the education of our students and helping us provide for them. We couldn't do this without you.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item three point zero three, Student Representatives. You have Sophia and Myron.
Oh, it's on. Hi. Okay, first, we're starting off with girls' sports. So Monroe Girls' High School has won four games in a row now, and their next game will be tomorrow at Stanwood High School at seven. And then Monroe's Girl Volleyball is doing very good. They've only lost three games, and they also play Stanwood tomorrow at home at seven. And then Coast Country has their high school championship this Thursday with their first event starting at two thirty. And then with homecoming, homecoming nominees were just nominated, two people from each club and score a pick to be a part of court, and I'm excited to say I was nominated for track. And then the court runs with half votes and half food drive, so the two nominees who donated the most food in Monday under their names, combined with how many votes they gain will be crowned. And then homecoming voting starts this, um, it was Thursday, October twenty second. And then the Homecoming Pub Assembly will be Thursday, October twenty four, since we didn't have school that Friday. And then there will be a tailgate with activities and food from four to six before the homecoming football game, which will, the homecoming nominees will be announced, and the top two will be crowned. And then homecoming will be Saturday, October sixth, twenty sixth, and this year's theme is Tangled, which I'm very happy about.
Um, I don't really have much to talk about. Sophie pretty much covered it all, but, um, as you guys know, the football team just played Camas Friday, and it was a pretty tough game. Um, we lost, but it's okay. I feel like that's what we needed to become a better team and to move forward in the future. Um, as far as the phone policy and the PED policy goes, I feel like that's going really well. Um, I know some people aren't happy with it, but I feel like students are more engaged in class and they are keeping their grades up due to this new policy, and it's just really helping teachers and students connect more. So I feel like that's working really well.
Any questions, directors? So it's a tangle theme? What, like, what does that mean?
Okay, so you know, like, the Disney movie Tangled? It's, she was like, I think it's more of like, I know, like, for at least for, like, the homecoming nominees, they'll do, like, wanted posters everywhere to, like, promote each nominee. And then I'm guessing she's a princess, so I'm guessing, I know they're doing, like, the, her tower and, uh, her, like, she has, like, a famous flower, so I think they're doing, like, those around for homecoming. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you both for your reports. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item three point zero four, we have public comment. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As a board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join us as a panelist. Allow video and unmute your microphone. Our first speaker is Nate. Hi, Nate. Can I have you share your name and your relationship to the school district?
Uh, my name is Nate Morgan. I am a youth football coach with Monroe Youth Football. I also have a son that's a fifth grader at Salem Woods Elementary. Uh, and I'm here tonight to talk about, from a sports perspective on my youth board, uh, job. I'm the VP of Fields for Monroe Youth Football. I came to you guys last year talking about field availability for just parents and families, taxpayers, using the sports fields because they were previously locked up. I appreciate the changes. I've seen, been able to use the fields, you know, during the summer and after hours with my kid to practice football. Um, but one of the things that I wanted to bring up that the board, our football board, has been talking about is the fees for the fields. I submitted a packet for you guys to look at. Um, we would request that you consider looking at some other school districts like Lake Stevens. Lake Stevens also has a very good youth program that helps with their kids and their feeder programs like us to get their kids into sports, get them trained and get, and, uh, out in, you know, being mobile. Um, their fee schedule is five dollars per athlete per season, whereas we are here, thirty dollars per hour, plus fifteen dollars an hour for lights, and on weekends when we have games, it's forty-two dollars, forty-two cents per hour for a custodian to be there all day long. And we're there for this last Saturday, well, two Saturdays ago, we were there for over twelve hours, so that's custodian, we were charged fourteen-plus hours. I mean, it's, we've spent, for the two months, we've spent seventeen thousand dollars to use the facilities, which we appreciate because they're great facilities. They're the only football fields in town. But if there was a way that we could, uh, lower those fees, it'd be, it would help us to be able to low, keep our costs down, keep our registration fees down, be able to provide sports for more kids. Our, um, our board, we do scholarships for children that can't pay or have circumstances where they can't afford it, and we take that out of our budget from everybody else. We also try to get sponsorships to help pay for that, but the fees are a huge, the school fees are a huge portion of our budget. So if we could somehow figure out how to work with you guys to get those fees down, to get more kids able to play, um, I think it's a huge benefit to the community. You can see, there's, there is, um, studies that show that kids in sports, they set goals, they work towards being, to achieving those goals. They learn how to win, they learn how to lose, right? We all learn from losing the same as we do winning, and I think they're all benefits for children and the community. So that was one thing that I would just like to request that you guys maybe consider, and obviously not this year, but in future years, looking at the fee schedule. Um, I do know it's gone down from last year because last year it was like fifty dollars an hour, which we appreciate that. Um, but still, just looking at those kinds of things to help us out. Uh, that's all that I have since I'm out of time.
Thanks, Nate. Gavin? Yeah.
Hello.
Hey, Gavin, can I have you give us your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yes, my name is Gavin Christian Knudsen, and my relationship to the school district is I am a student, a senior at Monroe High School, and I am also was the previous swim captain of the Monroe High School Swim Team. And today I come here to talk about the coach problems that we've been having as of recent. I am a swimmer who has been swimming for as long as I can remember at this point. I've been swimming nearly my entire life, and through those times, I have seen many coaches. I have seen good coaches, I have seen bad coaches, and I've seen a lot of characteristics that drive teams apart and drive them together. Coach Sunday, our coach, last year was one of the best coaches I have ever seen. She drove us together in a way that no coach has ever driven a team together before that I have seen. And as a high school team, which is already quite small, it made us feel like we were a family and not just a group of people that got together after school. As well as that, I've seen other coaches in the past at this high school, and as a senior, I worry for the future of the swim team. If we don't have a good coach, people will not want to join the men's swim team, and there's a chance that it could completely not exist if we don't have a good and strong team. I think to aid the future of swimmers and not just ourselves, we need to have a strong coach like Miss Sunday, and we need to really focus on making sure that swimmers feel together as a whole. I think having Miss Sunday as a coach this year would help resolve a lot of the issues that us, as swimmers, have and would help keep us together and would really create a healthy environment for people. As a senior, I am quite worried as well because I haven't had the same coach these past four years. Every single year I've had a different coach, and this year I would like to keep Coach Sunday as a coach because she was a perfect fit for us. That is all.
Thank you, Gavin.
Of course.
Okay, Austin? Hey, Austin, naming your relationship to the school district.
Um, I'm Austin McGraw, and I have a junior high school, and I'm also a three-sport athlete. Uh, I'm here to speak on Coach Sunday, uh, being our returning, how she should be our returning coach. Um, last year, she, uh, she was, um, an amazing coach. She, it was my first year doing swimming. Um, I do it in between cross country and track. Um, and it was just something I could do to pass through the winter, uh, but she made it something that I looked forward to every day, um, an enjoyable experience. Uh, and, you know, I've had many coaches. I've done sports since I was a little kid, and, uh, she checked all the boxes of what a great coach should have. Um, she knows what we need as an athlete. Um, you know, she started the year, um, with only, like, three days to prepare for the season. Um, and she made sure she put time and effort every day to know what we needed as athletes. And she was very dedicated to it. She put in, um, hours at home, making sure that we were all prepared for meets. Um, we were in, um, races that we wanted to be in, uh, and practices. Everyone, um, looked forward to showing up. Everyone was happy, um, something I don't see in my other sports, you know, not everyone is happy to be there, but on a team with seven guys last year, we were all happy to be there, uh, and I think that was because of Coach Sunday's drive, um, that she drove for the sport. Um, and I think that we need to have a returning coach, so, um, she has more time to prepare, so she can even do, do even better than she did last time. Um, my favorite memory, um, with her was, uh, I hadn't went to Donna's appointment. I showed up, uh, twelve, uh, twenty minutes late because I was coming to fight with the Donnis. Um, everyone else on the team was either sick or they didn't have their, um, swimsuit that day. Um, and so she asked me personally if I still wanted to swim, and I'm a dedicated athlete, so I put, uh, all the effort I can, and so anytime I can get time to practice, I take it. And so she made sure to stay, even though, uh, she could have just called practice off. She stayed for me, uh, so I can get that extra, you know, thirty little minutes, um, of time. Um, and it just shows how dedicated she is. And, you know, with seven people on a team, it's hard to, you know, to make us all together and a tight-knit team. We're going to be as teams like, you know, Lake Stevens with thirty, forty people, so a seven. She did a team bonding activity, uh, where every meet we gave, uh, gift bags to another person they didn't know, and it was a really way to, you know, we all laughed and stuff and way to bring the team together, and, uh, I think she's, you know, a perfect fit, uh, and she really wants to have the job, so any reason that, I don't, I don't feel like there should be any reason for her not to have the job. That's all.
Thanks, Austin. Vincent?
Hello.
Elevator music, sorry, y'all. Hey. Hey, Vincent, your name and your relationship to the school district.
Uh, my name is Vincent Tessandori. Um, I'm a senior at Monroe High School, and, uh, I was on the swim team last year. Um, I like to bring up the rehiring of Coach Sunday, um, because she was a great coach last year, and she made swim team way more enjoyable than past years. And would be a big part, uh, of the decision to rejoin swim this year. That's all.
Thanks, Vincent. Hey, Adam? Hey, Adam. Name and relationship to the school district.
My name is Adam Noga Styren. Um, I swim for the Monroe High School for the last three years. I used to attend Sky Valley Education Center. I'm currently in Rick Start. So it's really important to me that Coach Sunday, it's our coach, uh, this season, because we had her last year. I, she was a really good coach for us, the best coach I've ever seen, and I've been competitive swimming for over five years. And I think she really boosted morale for such a small team, and it was fun to go to swim practice, look forward to it every day, whereas before I dreaded going to it just because our coaches were horrible. It just did not make it fun for anybody, so it's really important to me for the rest of my team that we have for next year.
Thank you, Adam. Otto? Hey, Otto. Name and relationship to the school district.
Hello. My name is, uh, Otto James Edson, and I'm here as a senior, I am a senior, sorry, uh, for Monroe High School. And I would like to talk about how a new student is joining swim for the first time sees this. Uh, I've heard from plenty of them who are already in swim, because I'm great friends with a lot of them, that this has been by far the best coach that they've ever had, as they've said. And it makes me worried about maybe even how good someone else would do. It makes me worried as an outsider, what if a teacher who it's, they're, they just showed up? How well are they going to be doing compared to somebody who's already had, uh, all this well-received, well-received comments about them? And I'm just mostly worried that if we have a new swim teacher or coach, we aren't going to be able to guarantee how well they're going to be able to teach the class. And as somebody new to swim, that really bothers me. I don't want to join swim and not know what to do, not know proper form. I feel like with somebody new, it'll be way harder to form a connection with them. And having this already trusted coach who has pushed the team so far already would be a great help. And I'm worried that we aren't going to be able to get too far with a, a teacher who we can't verify how well they would be able to teach the class, especially one of such small size. Thank you.
Thanks, Otto. Diana? Hi. Name and relationship to the school district.
Hi, I'm Diana McCrone, and I have three boys, two in Chain Lake Elementary, and then Austin in Monroe High School, as well as I'm a court-appointed special advocate within, for students within the Monroe School District. Um, and I do want to speak for Coach Sunday as the swim, the boys' swim coach. Um, I was at every meet, and I took all the pictures for the boys for the yearbook, so I got to see they were like a little family. They were very close. Um, she's an incredible coach. She is so good with the kids. Um, and she's probably, I'm sorry, Nate, you're one of them, but she's probably my favorite coach of, that any of my kids have ever had. Um, she's patient, enthusiastic, very caring. She knows the strengths and weaknesses, weaknesses of each swimmer and what works for them and doesn't. I think that it would be a huge disservice to not hire her back, especially for the three seniors, possibly four, to have to start all over again with someone who doesn't know what each of them needs. Um, she helped the team become stronger and closer, and I keep seeing the job is still posted when we have someone right there who's willing, that would love to do it again, and that's who the boys want to have. Um, and then she's also very knowledgeable and experienced about swim, so she's not just someone off the, you know, I would not know what they should do. But, you know, the announcement is going out to everyone about, is there anyone that could be the coach? This is the person who knows the techniques as well as the students, what works, and she has experience as a swimmer herself, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Katie?
Hi. Hi, this is gonna be a change of subject.
Yeah, all right. Name and relationship to the school district.
Uh, my name is, uh, Katie Boor. Um, I am a mother of three in the district, and I am also a para educator at Park Lake Middle School. Um, what I want to talk about is our lack of, um, we've just got a lot of things going on there in the SLC program that we've brought to the attention of our administrators, like our automatic doors. We have children's and wheelchair, three children who need the automatic doors working. They are not working. We've got two that are broken. They've been broken since last year. Um, they come, they fix them, and then they break for, like, within a couple of weeks. Um, we have, uh, issues with changing tables and lack thereof. We have uh, issues with changing tables and lack thereof. We are. Uh, short-staffed to the point of it's a safety issue. We have been told, last week we were told that we were so short, or two weeks ago, we were so short-staffed. To basically keep our kids in the classroom and make do. That is a quote. Um, which is taking away our, the, the children that we serve, it's taking away their right to an education. And it's just poor management at this point. They knew what was coming from the elementary schools. They had the roster, they knew what we needed, they knew we needed um, para educator, more para educator support. It is in I E Ps and it is not happening. We also have, the people that they have sent to us are unwilling to do the job. They are unwilling to um, assist in the bathroom, or they physically cannot assist in the bathroom. We had an elderly woman get her hair pulled, and she was kicked in the stomach. She lasted one week. We have. We have so many needs, and we are falling short. We are not, we are not doing these children a service. We are failing them by not having the adequate support that they need. It's not about us at this point, it's about the kids. They are not being serviced properly, because we are not getting the help that we need in the, in these classrooms. And that is all.
Thank you Katie. Moving on to agenda item four point one zero, approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in consent agenda dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item five point zero one, superintendent update.
Alright, so thank you for letting us adjust the format a little bit for. These presentations, it was kind of nice for y'all to have one-on-one conversations, I think with, with the school principals. Part of that, um, all the presentations today, I think you saw attendance in all five of them, I'm assuming, so. This is our district level attendance trends, as you know, it's a district um, goal as well. Uh, for our chronically absent students or, or positively stated. Students who have regular attendance. This is our daily attendance trend over the last three years for, by school and by dist, by the overall district, the last three years. So the good news is, you'll see that, that average daily attendance is, is better this year than the previous two years for the month of, of September. The same was true last year, if you remember, that every month we were looking better for average daily attendance, but we were still struggling a bit with. Um, students in regular attendance and how that's defined. Uh, basically is, uh, students who have missed less than, or ten percent or less. Of the school year, so over a hundred and eighty day um, school year, that would be ten, or eighteen or, or fewer days absent. So I want to show you our September numbers for that particular metric. And I didn't show these last year, remember, I stuck with just average daily attendance, so we'll, we'll take a look at this monthly. By school at our every other week principal meetings as well. So our average daily attendance, again, swinging in the right direction. This year, um, our students in regular attendance for the month of September. Uh, has improved a bit, so the very bottom number that you see is the uh, students in regular attendance. So this year seventy-one point four percent of the time, uh, last year this time about seventy percent. As a reminder. Uh, nationwide, pre, pre-COVID numbers, we were closer to eighty-five percent. So again, this isn't a Monroe School District problem. It's nationwide, and we're, we're starting to see kids attend more regularly, but. Um, for a variety of reasons, kids missed a lot more school during the pandemic. And then once you're missing that much school, I think it's hard to get back into that regular cadence of attendance. So I think uh, during each of the five presentations today, you, you saw some common strategies, I think. And maybe some that were unique to the, the specific school building. Um, but again, uh, we will share this monthly as we did last year as well. The other piece that uh, you, you may or may not have heard with the school improvement plan, plan presentations. Is we're really focusing on making sure that we are responding to the families that we serve, so you know that. Uh, there are over, I think this year maybe twenty-three languages spoken in our school district. Uh, Tamara and Erin happen to be our, our district level experts, if you will, so they do all the training on this parent square, and we've had it for a couple of years. This year, uh, it's really because of the push of our strategic plan. Um, our use of parent square is, is improve, improving this year as compared to last. So we want to get to the point where a hundred percent of our employees, every time they're sending communication out to their families. They're doing so through parents square, because we know it's translated into the uh, parents' preferred language. So that is fantastic news, that we're seeing some improvements there. Uh, also want to talk a little bit about our facility advisory committee. Uh, we, we're gonna start that here pretty soon. We had, and that's tied to our objective five point one, obviously, we've talked about this a lot. Uh, I was surprised at the number of people who applied to be on the committee. A lot of people wanted to do so, and we actually, it's. This is rare for me in other districts I've been, and we've had to beg people to get on committees like this. Uh, we actually had to turn people away. Uh, we, we expect to have around twenty-five members on, on this committee. Yeah, that's, it's a lot. Uh, we're not gonna start until January. I was uh, working with an outside consultant, and they recommended that. Uh, the cadence of the meetings be more frequent instead of monthly, and, and usually it takes about six to eight meetings, so we'll start in January. And we'll go through about June. Uh, still, we'll keep the goal of having some kind of a formal recommendation to the board. In uh, September, but uh, they recommended that we kind of make, make it a shorter timeframe, so people. Aren't meeting monthly, and they forget what we've talked about uh, over the course of the, the time we're meeting. So that's starting up. Another piece I want to hit, and again, this, some of these are just grabbed out of communications from district level administrators, because I knew to, tonight you were gonna. Spend about an hour and a half on school improvement plans. This is system level work, so you saw that everybody had literacy goals by school. Uh, as a system, we're taking a look at why are we uh. I would say really flat when it comes to student achievement in, in English language, language arts. And we're digging into all, all of our instructional materials, all of our instructional practices, et cetera. And there's a belief that maybe we're misaligned when it comes to the science of reading, and maybe. Uh, maybe there's a phonics piece that, that's missing, so we're running a pilot for. Uh, twenty of our elementary school teachers this year. And the staff who we choose will be uh, spread, spread across the, all five of the elementary schools. They'll get great training in this uh, UFLI curriculum and support along the way, and we'll be able to compare uh, their data. Uh, with people that are not part of the pilot, and our guess is, uh, we'll see some improvement. Again, if we're correct, that there's some misalignment with, with uh, uh, our curriculum, our instructional materials, and what we expect kids to know. And be able to do at each grade level. We have a big day coming up, up on October twenty-fifth, again, to build our school uh, system. Uh, improve our entire school system, and that is a, a day off for students. It's a professional development day for staff. Um, our K five will be all about literacy, so we're gonna spend some time unpacking the science of reading. And uh, doing a little bit of crosswalking with our current uh, curriculum or instructional materials that we are using. And then our educators will uh, dig in and start doing some essential standards work, just like we did. Uh, for mathematics uh, last school year. And I think there might be a couple more here. Uh, we, we have our guiding coalition meeting again this year, but we're gonna meet more fre- frequently, so as you may or may not remember. All ten of our schools have uh, one teacher leader that is a member of our district level guiding coalition. That team is responsible for building out the professional learning community culture. Um, for our school district, we'll meet, I think, six times this school year, and um. Part of the, the rationale for having this guiding coalition group with our teacher leads is, we want. We don't want to just have, if we're making system level changes, our principal standing up in front of the staff. We want our teachers to be on board too, and be part of the decision-making process, so they can stand together as we're making system level changes. Uh, to better meet the needs of our students, so we'll have kind of a regular cadence of meetings with those folks as, as well. And then last but not least, um, one to, I think, I, I think I shared that we're doing new administrator onboarding this year. Something that hasn't happened i- in our district before, at least to the level that we're doing it here, and that's tied to strategic. Objective three point three around onboarding and being systematic and intentional on bringing new folks uh, on board. Uh, so we've got about five administrators uh, receiving regular support and guidance uh, this school year. Uh, as well, so uh, what I'll, I'll plan on doing this year, um, is for each of the updates here. I'll make sure I walk you through the work, you know, what is the uh, work that's being guided by our strategic plan? Um, I think that as board members, you, once you leave here, you out, you have your lives, and you have your other jobs and all those kinds of things. And we're doing the work here, and I, I really want to make sure that you're aware of the good things that are going on. And the, the, as far as the strategic plan is concerned, it's doing exactly as intended. It's guiding the work. Uh, every day for our staff and our students. That's all I have.
Thank you Sean. Okay, moving on to agenda item six point zero one, board reports and or comments.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the administrators and happy principal appreciation month to all of them, and all of our APs as well. And they put a lot of time in, and I was just really excited to hear a lot of the goals. That they have from last year, what they've learned, and then the strategies that they have in place for this next year. And one of the things that was really encouraging for me in our workshop is, and I'm excited for when we have the other administrators in our next meeting, but um. I think that for you guys, because we haven't had a chance to talk about this even, but for me, I think one of the exciting things is, there's a lot of. We recognize where we're struggling, we recognize where students are on the bubble of like, just barely finally hitting goal, and they're just right there. And what a lot of the things are that are sometimes multi-layered factors that are holding them back from achieving goals, whether it's. The attendance issue, which we've been very intentional about, and so it was just the common theme that I saw of chronic attendance issues, and. How do we say, okay, now we know who those families are, we know how to hone in on those, we know how to reach those families, we're gonna be intentional about that this year. And then on the academic side, the practice side, the belonging side. For me, I feel like those are a lot of things that are just pushing that, you know, that we're so close on a lot of levels. So for me, and also the, the, I think the goals were very, they're very realistic and attainable. And even where they've seen positive momentum to see those goals, so for me, I just. You know, we didn't have a chance to really be brief about any of that, but for me, that was something that was really um, encouraging to see in all of the practice, and there's some. Frustrating moments as well of like, okay, here's where we didn't do well, but it's, how do we continue to grow from that? So that was just some of my reflections, right?
So I was gonna actually update you guys on something. I had the opportunity to go and help reupholster some of the seats. At George Wagner Center uh, with the Monroe Arts Council, but also with Monroe Rotary. And just to see the progress that they're making on Wagner Center in person on the inside, it's really incredible. To see the changes that they have already made, um, and just to kind of help be a part of that process was really cool too, so. Uh, I was able to go visit Maltby Elementary and see the front gate that we've had put up for safety purposes. That was one of the things that we approved. It's beautiful and glorious and has already been helping um, them kind of keep kids contained. And making that front more secure, so it was really neat to see that in person. It was also neat to see. The fourth grade teachers come together and kind of do some of the work. There's been a lot of sharing between schools of things that work. That they're doing well, and so now they're pushing it out to other schools, and so to see a template from Frank. At Maltby Elementary and to see the teachers working with this and how to identify students and the, you know, the help that they need. To make them successful, uh, was really cool to see, to see that sharing, to see the schools help make one another better. So that was a really neat thing. Also, the start with hello at Frank, I know we've had a Facebook post go out, but man, when I saw the hello in the different languages. Along that chain link fence, I went, yes, yes, this is it, this is so incredible. So to see Ugo and the entire team at Frank, I mean, it takes everybody there, you know, to make these things work. But to see what they're doing and to see this come alive, you know, with belonging and helping kids feel like they're welcome. It's a beautiful sight, and so I really appreciate that, and I love learning more about that. I loved going up to Hidden as well and seeing Dr. Sharma in action. She is an incredibly phenomenal teacher. Uh, and just to see the different techniques and things that she's employing to engage the students and to help them learn about science. I was like, this is a class I could sit in, so if you get a chance, go up there. Jessie's wife is pretty awesome as well. I got to see the kids come up with a story, you kind of have the writer, the director, and then they're turning it into an animated cartoon. Which I was like, this is, this is right on, so really cool to kind of see the kids doing that, and they're more than happy to share with you their ideas. And oh, this is how this works, because I'm not hip on any, any of that, so they were kind of educating me, which was really neat. The sports have been incredible. We have so many amazing student athletes, so I just encourage you to get out there and support them. It's a night well spent. I know it's one of my favorite things to do with my kids, so um, yeah, that's all I've got for tonight.
Thanks Molly, uh, we do want to take a moment to express, following up on Director Campbell's uh. Shout out to our principals, uh, just how grateful as a board we are to the dedication leadership and hard work of our outstanding principals. Uh, each day they inspire our students, provide invaluable support to our teachers and staff, and work tirelessly to create a positive learning environment. That benefits our entire school community. Thank you to our principals for everything you do for our schools and our community. Bonnie McKerny from Chain Lake Elementary, interim principal, Anna Apter, Chain Lake Elementary Principal, Ugo Molina, Frank Wagner Elementary Principal. Deborah Henderson, Frank Wagner Elementary Assistant Principal, Jeff Presley, Freyland's Elementary Principal, Jonathan Judy, Hidden River Middle School Principal. Sarah Alvarez, Malt, Maltby and Freyland's Elementary Assistant Principal, Christine Hillstad, Malt, Maltby Elementary Principal. Melanie Gray, Salem Woods Elementary Principal, A.J. Adamski, Salem Woods and Chain Lake Elementary Assistant Principal. Brett Willie, Monroe High School Principal, Rachel Bailey, MHS Assistant Principal and Leaders High School Associate Principal. Jamie Johnson, Monroe High School Assistant Principal, Noah Wallace, Monroe High School Assistant Principal. Kristi Hilson, Park Place Middle School Principal, Tanya Brink, Park Place Middle School Assistant Principal. Julio Chavez, Park Place Middle School Assistant Principal, Cor- Karen Rosenkranz, Sky Valley Education Center Principal. And Alexandra Clark, Sky Valley Education Center Assistant Principal. Shout out to all of you, thank you so much for all that you do. Um, I also wanted to make note, I was able to attend curriculum night both at the high school and middle school. Um, as a parent, but also as a school board director, uh, it was great, uh, such great energy. Went around and kind of toured as well the high school a week or so ago, and uh, students are awesome. Teachers are awesome. It's just been really great to see that one month in, it's uh, still really high energy, good energy. Um, take the next step is having their October twenty-fifth. Cheers to Change, an Evening with Purpose event at seven P M. They asked that I invite. You all, remind you that your invitations are in your email. Uh, thank you again to the principals for coming in and spending an hour and a half. And repeating themselves five times over, but it was a cool little speed dating situation. Uh, with their school improvement plans, it was great to connect and kind of check in. It's always, again, just to see how they are, because they're human as well. So I appreciate that. Uh, Holly, thank you so much for all of your updates. You're amazing. So we've been able to attend lots of things just in our Bumpus family, a lot of the events, because Holly reminds us of soccer. And football and youth football and basketball and all of the things that are going on Monroe and choir and cheer, everything. So I appreciate you Holly, thank you so much for reminding us. Um, I will be on the morning, I was invited by a celebrity, Mr. Presley Freyland's. To come on the morning radio show tomorrow to help with, celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, so excited for that. He's gonna quiz me, I don't know what to expect. Hate pop quizzes. Uh, Sophia and Myron, thank you. He's going to quiz me, I don't know what to expect. Hate pop quizzes. Uh, Sophia and Meyer, and thank you so much for presenting. I look forward to connecting with you both as well, coming up with some ideas. Um, and Monroe versus Camus, always go Bearcats. Alright, it is five fifty-five P M and tonight's meeting is adjourned.